Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 1st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Would you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, Mr. Tuckfield, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Tuckfield is present, Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Bentley. Uh, Mr. Spatafora.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Bentley and Mr. Provenzano both have excused absences.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I'd like to exclude Member Provenzano and Member Bentley from any and all roll call votes.
Motion made by Mr. Shudo.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, approval of previous meeting minutes. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one request of modification. This would be on item four. I had abstained from that vote as I had not been at the previous meeting to approve the minutes, so.
Okay.
One correction.
Noted by Mr. Box, and I'll make a motion. We accept them as presented with the correction by Member Tuckfield. Motion by Mr. Shudo.
Question, I'm sorry, question on the motion's support. Mr. Bentley, in an email, pointed out in the agenda item six B, one of the parcel numbers from the last meeting with a mass rezoning, parcel number zero eight twenty-eight dash one twenty-eight and dash zero zero nine. Either there was a typo or it was incorrectly listed that as section, as in parcel one twenty-eight, zero zero nine, when the correction should be made to read one twenty-six dash zero zero nine. So if there are no other additions, corrections, or deletions, I will support, or I should say, I would like to make a note of that correction on the motion and in the second of that motion.
I'll let you make the motion, I'll support it.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from October 19th, 2021, noting Mr. Tuckfield's correction and also with the correction that I had stated regarding the mass rezoning for parcel zero eight twenty-eight dash one twenty-six dash zero zero nine.
And I'll support that. Okay, motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Shudo, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right, approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Box, we have some changes, correct?
Uh, we have two items that have asked to be tabled this evening.
Okay.
And I'll defer to Mr. Loyah whether we do that now or when we get to them on the
Either way, I mean, we can amend the agenda to say that that matter is currently tabled or we can table it at the time it comes up, either way is fine.
Yeah, I just want to prove the agenda with the changes, that's all. So, we're looking at site plan phase one A and one B of Matic PUD as tabled, correct?
Correct.
And we're looking at planned unit development, general design for Fremont tabled as well.
Correct.
Okay, so with those two items, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda unless there's something else. I'll support it. Okay, motion by me, Michael Hardy, and supported by Mr. Shudo, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we move on to new business. Preliminary plan, Marlberg Farms, permanent parcel zero eight two one two zero 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 one four and zero eight two two one zero 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 one seven, located on the south side of Twenty-three Mile Road, one point one six miles east of Romeo Plank Road, sections twenty-one and twenty-two, Polty Homes of Michigan petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. This first item, as you mentioned, is with regards to a residential development near the intersection of Twenty-three and Haydenreich. They were referring to the development as Marlberg Farms. They have requested a preliminary plan approval for a single-family residential site condo containing a hundred and seven units to be developed in two phases. Again, it will locate on the two corners on the south side of Twenty-three Mile where it meets with Haydenreich, as you see here. Both parcels are zoned R1 at this time. Our internal departments have reviewed this site plan, this preliminary plan. You have the reviews in your packet. All lots do meet the minimum square footage width, depth, and lot ratio requirements, as well as the sidewalks provided meet standards. The primary points of access are from Haydenreich Road. They do, both phases will connect to adjacent residential neighborhoods as well. Those neighborhoods already have the Stub Street built out, which was done in anticipation of a connection in the future. Adequate parking is provided and landscaping of the common areas is provided throughout the site. With all that being said, at this time, the internal departments are recommending approval of this development at this time.
Okay, is the petitioner here? Please come up, state your name and address for us, for the record.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Mike Knowles, N-O-L-E-S. I'm with the Umlaur Group. Address is four nine two eight seven West Road in Wixom, Michigan. Also here with me tonight is Kirk Thomas with Polty Homes of Michigan. We're very excited about this development. Some of the features of this plan are that it's straight zoning, so it's a hundred units on just under forty acres, two and a half units to the acre. All of the requirements, as Mr. Box mentioned, are straight. All the setbacks, there's no variances being proposed on anything here. The roads are twenty-eight foot wide, concrete roads. The frontage walk is provided, eight-foot-wide concrete frontage walk on both Haydenreich and on Twenty-three Mile. The intent is to develop the project in two phases. The west phase will go first, the fifty units on the west side of Haydenreich Road and the fifty units on the east side will be phase two. One of the things we tried to do, as you probably remember, this was unanimously approved for rezoning back in March to match all of the surrounding zoning, both here and at your township board. One of the things that we tried to do was to limit the access out to Haydenreich Road to minimize any traffic issues out on Twenty-three Mile. A couple of the major engineering changes, as we've gone through iterations of the plan, working with your staff and reviewing it, was the detention basins. There was originally one detention basin on the west side of the road, and we've broken them up into smaller detention basins, one on the east and two on the west. Those detention basins all drain to the Xander Drain by gravity. The original proposal had a pump station, a stormwater management pump station involved, and we redesigned it in consultation with your township engineer to be able to provide a gravity drain. There's an eighty-foot-wide drain easement, which is required along the Xander Drain, which we are providing for on this plan. Let's see, the street names have been approved, took a couple cracks at it. Some of them are just continuations of the existing Stub Street, as Mr. Box mentioned. We're tying in at three locations. Fire Department also conditionally approved the plans, so long as we, in final engineering, you know, meet all the hydrant spacing and the signage requirements. One feature of the plan is that there's twenty-four point four four percent open space in the common areas, which is nice when you do a straight zoning plan and have some nice open spaces. These will be some handsome homes that, back to the Xander Drain. And those are really the main features of this plan, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to commissioners. Any comments from our commissioners?
I got one to the petitioner. You got three detention ponds?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming they're going to accept the water during heavy rains and then slowly release it, or is there going to be a lot of water left in these?
No, it'll be collected during the heavy rains and then slowly released. It's all going to meet the Macomb County Stormwater Management requirements for the detention basins. You can notice on the plan, too, that there are maintenance access strips for all of the ponds. And one of the other requirements that your staff worked with us on was to have all of these areas being a common element, so that the homeowners association is responsible for maintenance on these drains for the life of the development.
So that brings me to my second question. So the landscaping common area will be maintained by the homeowners?
That's correct, sir, yes, sir.
So that'll be built right into their?
Into their dues, so that...
Dues?
Yes, absolutely, one hundred percent.
So regardless, who lives there will pay the due?
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Mr. Tuckfield?
To the petitioner, just curious on lots eleven, twelve, and nineteen, they'll be on the west side of the project butting the west property line. There's some common area behind them where it butts the parcel's edges. Why not make those parts of the lots? Obviously, this is a site condo, you do have the flexibility to do that, but just curious what your thinking was there?
Yeah, I, um, you bring up a good point. We could definitely take a look at that in final engineering. I, there's really no reason to cut those short unless there's maybe some common area drainage that needs to go on in there, but I think you're right. I think that, you know, leaving sort of an abandoned piece behind one of those parcels that's tough to access might be difficult. And there is no minimum for a straight zoning job for the open space, so we could definitely take a look at that in final engineering.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it if you find that there's a reason to keep it there, it just seemed like it's something to look at. And then two questions with regards to the common landscaped areas. Both of these are in phase two, or phase one, rather than, I'm looking at the west side of Haydenreich. You have the one off of Banbury, it says five point eleven acres, and then you have the one off of Kilburn that says five point eleven acres. Just visibly, it does not appear that they're same size, and I'm curious if there's some different lot line that I'm seeing. So, for example, the one to the north goes from lot forty all the way to across from lot ten. Again, just visually, it looks like a considerably different size than the one that is to the east of twenty-six, lot twenty-six. I wasn't sure if there was something that was missing there.
Yeah, so I think what Steve did there was, he put the label on there twice, but it's the same area, so that five-acre piece. I think the total open space is nine acres total, so if you take...
Five between the two.
It's, yes, the whole area is the boundary for that, so that's five of the overall nine acres, which makes sense because it's just under forty acres and we would need ten acres of open space total to be twenty-five percent. So that's what he did. He just labeled it twice, but it's the same area.
Understood, very, very good. And I should know this, but I don't, is twenty-five percent a requirement for a site condo, or? Yes, I'm not familiar with the twenty-five percent you're referring to.
No, so the twenty-four point four four percent is the amount of open space that we have included in here. There isn't a requirement because we're going for straight zoning, but it's comparable to some of the, like, the planned unit developments or some of the cluster type of zoning that you see, where they try to preserve some of the open space.
More of the open space.
So I'm just pointing out that it's very similar in open space area, which is nice on a straight zoning plan.
Understood, very good. And then I guess my last question is just that, it's a question, you know, we here in planning classes and other such things, encouraging people to put in pocket parks. Obviously, you have these landscaping portions. Is that something you ever consider with these? Bear in mind, I'm not asking for one, I'm just curious where your thoughts are on it.
Yeah, absolutely, and there was a full landscaping plan that it was submitted. Part of the preliminary site plan is that final landscape plan is supposed to be part of the final package. So we've already got some little pocket areas where people can sit and can enjoy those areas. So, yeah, one hundred percent, there's not a lot of open space here, even though, you know, twenty-five percent is a lot of open space. A lot of it's Xander Drain, so there's not a lot of opportunities, but certainly we'll add some benches and stuff along the sidewalks in the neighborhood where they cross the open space.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Anyone? Well, then I'd like to open it to the public, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, we're opening this for public hearing, and this is the Marlberg Farms preliminary plan. Any person wishing to speak will be recognized and will be asked to give their name and address before speaking. We ask that all speakers limit their comments to four minutes. Once the public portion is closed, we will not recognize further discussion or comments from the community. So is there anyone here that would like to speak on the Marlberg Farm? Come up to the podium, please, sir?
I just have a question.
You gotta go up.
Does that vote come from Brentbury?
Sir, no, no, you have to come up to the podium and state your name and your address for me, please. Okay.
I feel the same, too, some days.
I'm just looking at the diagram, and I see the road from, is that Breddenbury, is that Huxley?
Sir, can you state your name and address for us, please?
Line five zero seven eight seven Breddenbury, on the corner of Huxley and Breddenbury.
Okay, thank you.
Your name, please?
Bernard Waters.
Okay, there we go. Okay, go ahead, sir.
I just wondered, it's a dead-end street, now are they going to open that up?
Okay, well, we'll ask them at the end. We take all of your comments, and I should have said this, and we save them to the end and then we comment on them.
That's good, okay, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have another gentleman back there, I think he raised his hand, come on up, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Mancy, I live in two zero five six seven San Martins Avenue. I'll be like the line of the development on the southwest of that, where the detention area in the bottom on the... So, my question is, which is, I as a developer, but I know the city has some regulation, with that detention area, they're going to put five-foot fence right on the edge of our houses? It was possible to put that fence of five foot on the other side of the ten-foot clearance, because that's going to give access to the drain, storm drain in our houses, because we have a line of the drainstorm that every couple years, the city come and clean that drain. So that's going to give access to our houses and the detention area, because if you're going to block it with five-foot fence right on the edge of our houses, it's going to be hard to access to our houses to clean that, which is going to give access only for the detention area, just like recommendation for the future in case of something happened down in that, because I know third house on San Martins, of six years ago, they need to come and access to the storm drain to fix it, and they were, a couple trucks need to drive that ten-foot clearance in the back. So just a recommendation in future, the fence need to be on the other side of the ten-foot clearance from the houses on the southwest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Box, would you like to comment on the two questions? Was there anyone else? Oh, come on up, sir, I didn't see you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tim Schultz, I live at five zero six one one Cheltenham Drive. And I guess my just concern is, I know my street's a Stub Street, and, but considering it's so close to Haydenreich, is it really necessary to cut it through, is my question? I mean, it's literally one street over Haydenreich where my street is. So, I mean, access from the new development could easily, if you wanted to go south on Haydenreich, you just go out to the new streets that you're building. That's my concern, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Let me look, anyone else? All right. Mr. Box, would you like to comment?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, yes, we need to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, seconded by Mr. Spatafora, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay. Huxley, the question about the connection on Huxley Drive, yes, they do show that being connected. I think the gentleman was curious if that was going to be connected, they do show that. You can see my cursor up here, it is a connection here. With regards to the fence around the pond, I think it'll be, as they go through engineering, they'll determine whether it's a greater than six-to-one slope, at which point a fence is required for safety reasons around those, but that will all be handled in engineering, unless they may have that answer already, I can defer to the petitioner on that. And then with regards to the connection to Cheltenham, again, when other developers stub those streets, they do that for a reason, and it's to be connected, and so that's why this development is showing that connection here for circulation around the township.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I would reiterate Mr. Box's comments regarding the Stub Streets, and I do believe that the slope is a six-to-one slope, just based on my recollection and the way that the drawing looks, so there may not be any fence at all, but we'd be happy to work with engineering and the neighbors to make sure that everybody's got access to what they need, happy to put in gates and relocate fences as permitted by the township rules.
Okay, fair enough. Back to the commissioners, any other comments from commissioners?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Knowles, good evening. Do any of the, are any of the detention ponds, are they going to be dry detention, or will there be any standing water?
Um...
At this point?
Yeah, I, until...
Subject to your engineering.
Yeah, until we get the final engineering, you know, it's always funny, sometimes you end up with a higher water table, so it's tough to say exactly till we get through all of the final engineering, whether there'll be permanent water in the bottom of the ponds, but, you know, the concept is not for a permanent water table, it's not, we're not trying to create a lake feature there. Usually, you need about a four-foot head of water to maintain any kind of lake bottom, so I think it'll be more intermittent unless the groundwater affects it.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plan for Marlberg Farms permanent parcels zero eight two one two zero 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 one four and zero eight two two one zero 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 one seven to the Board of Trustees pursuant to it, meeting all of our requirements and all the department heads giving their recommendation.
I'll support it. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield, supported by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Tuckfield, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time. We look forward to working with your staff and township board on this project.
All right, thank you, and welcome. All right, next item on our list is rezoning, mass rezoning, residential one-family suburban R1S to residential one-family urban R1, located in parts of section one, twelve, and twenty-eight. Compt township petitioner, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I know you have sat through this a number of times, as this is being done in a number of phases, but I'll run through it again, as the members of the public are probably new to this, so essentially what we're doing here is just this, we're getting rid of one of the zoning categories.
Can we get that door shut, somebody?
Yeah, we need to, okay. There we go, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, okay, go ahead, Mr. Box.
So as I mentioned, what we're essentially doing here is removing the R1S category from the zoning districts. And why we're doing this, again, I know we've been over this a number of times, it does not correspond with the current 2008 master plan, there's a conflict between the master plan and the ordinance itself, and it will also not conform with the Cultivate Macomb Master Plan, which is in its final stages right now. The minimum requirement of the thirty thousand square foot lot equates to one point four or five units per acre in terms of density, and the master plan as it exists now, as well as the Cultivate Macomb Master Plan, the lowest density is two units per acre. So, in an attempt to rid ourselves of any potential future litigation or other issues, we are doing away with the R1S category at this time. Again, as I mentioned, this is being done in six phases. Phases one through four have already come through, so this is phase five this evening. The first four phases included properties, all going from R1S to R1, and then tonight, phase five, and then the next meeting you'll see phase six are largely properties going from R1S to something other than R1. There are a few tonight, and there will likely be a few next time that do still go to R1, but based on their geography and the way they sit, we did group them, as you see on the map here. So with regards to this evening, what the township is proposing in section one on the map up there, as you see, the upper right corner, or the northeast corner, the very northeast corner of the township, those will all be from, going from R1S to R1E if this is approved, with the exception of two parcels, and I'll show those in a second. And then the same with the parcel south of Hagan, but north of twenty-five on the opposite side of Fairchild, those will all go to R1, and then the segment along Romeo Plank will be from R1S to R2L in section twenty-eight. Going back to section one, there are two small parcels you see circled at the very top. Those parcels are actually too small to conform to R1E, so those two will also go to R1, as well as the other area that's circled there. They will, they will go to R1 if this is approved, and that does match the current master plan, and the other ones will go to R1E. Going to section twenty-eight, I did leave a flyer on your chair this evening. We did identify this afternoon, actually, three parcels that we are asking to remove from this evening's vote. They are numbered in your packet on the paper that I left for you. This is due to the fact that those three, so I guess to step backwards, the reason we're going from R1S to R2L here is because we know what's going to be developed there. We have a judgment with a developer who's building a senior complex here with a number of, I think, three different pieces, Walden Village, Walden Communities, and Blossom Meadows. And the R2L is the appropriate zoning that matches what they're building there. The three that I've identified are actually not part of that development, and those pieces do not meet the minimum five-acre requirement for the R2L category, so we will actually bring those back at a later date and have a different category, likely R1, for those three parcels. At this time, staff is recommending approval of these parcels to be rezoned, with the exception of the three that I mentioned a moment ago.
Okay, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Mr. Box, so you mentioned those three that we're pulling out because they don't meet the minimum requirements for R2L square footage, or acreage, or whatever the appropriate terminology would be. Seeing as the consent will rule in that case, why wouldn't we just do all of it to R1 and the consent overrides it unless they ever decided not to build, then it would revert?
That is a possibility, we could do that. Based on, again, what the consent says and what we, I think it's actually not a consent, I think it's a judgment, based on what the judgment says and what we assume is coming, this is the closest category that matches that development. If you prefer otherwise, I think that's a reasonable ask as well to zone R1, and the consent or the judgment would still control, as you say.
It would take precedence, the development would build, unless they choose not to build for some reason, which with the work they're doing, I would find that pretty unlikely, but, but your thought process was to put in something that would match what they were putting on there?
Correct.
Although, as obviously in R2L, not, I believe they got CF with restrictions.
Yes, but what they're building also matches R2L, the housing for elderly persons is part of R2L as well.
I should remember, but the, the, the building component at the south end, isn't that, is that three stories?
It is.
Or is it two stories? And three stories is allowed in R2L? Or is it two story? And three stories is allowed in R2L?
It is not, it is two stories in R2L, which is why they went with community facilities in the judgment.
Instead of R2L.
Correct.
Okay. I personally, I would prefer going to R1 myself, although again, I don't know that it really makes much difference at this point because I think they're gonna, they're well on their way to building it, but that'll be my only ques- or only comment. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? No one else? Okay. I, I, I was a little confused, Mr. Box, by the, the elder care facility. Where is that again? Is that those three, that's not those three parcels, right?
No, it's everything but those three parcels.
Everything but those three parcels.
Yeah, if I, if I go back, so the three I've identified, um, if I can find the mouse on here, so this large parcel here is one of the three components of the Walden Communities. And then from the edge of this parcel all the way down, uh, to the church property is, uh, the, the other two pieces or the other two components of the Blossom Meadows and, and Walden Village.
All right, thank you.
Just question, Mr. Box, wh- what would you prefer us to do here? Re- remove the, remove them? Would that, would that be safer?
Remove those three because they're non-conforming to what, what we had initially, uh, anticipated to be R2L. Uh, we don't wanna create a non-conforming parcel, so we'll come back at a later date with those three parcels. Uh, but the other ones, because I, I am quite confident of what's gonna be built there, and I think we all are, uh, this is the, the R2L is what matches what they're gonna be building.
Okay, so your recommendation is to remove them?
To remove those three from, from the vote tonight.
The three that we, you outlined here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public and.
I'll make a motion, we open it?
We need a motion, thank you. Motion by Mr. Shudo, support by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, um, again, I think everybody heard my little spiel about coming up, giving your name and address and all that other kinda stuff. You have four minutes, so if there's anybody here that would like to comment on this item, please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and share your concerns. Anyone? Oh, good, thank you, sir.
I'll go, I'll go first.
And just for the record, we opened it to the public at seven oh two. Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, my name is David Meckel. I reside at five 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 two zero Fairchild Road, which is directly on the east side of the street of the parcels that are in question, uh, between Hagan and Twenty-Five Mile Road, uh, on the west side of Fairchild that's up for rezoning. Um, my wife and I moved, have lived in McComb Township for probably thirty years of our married life, um, so we love it here. Uh, we lived the majority of that time in smaller subdivision lots, um, and a few years ago bought the parcel that we live on now, which is about six acres, and moved there because this area of the township is still very rural in estate-sized lots. Um, and that's what we, we would like to remain in an area that stays like that. So when I saw this, uh, come up to rezone the parcels across the street from R1S to R1, it kinda surprised me because there's no water and sewer in the area, um, I'm not aware of any intention to bring water and sewer in the area, which would really be the only reason to have property zoned R1 is to develop it as a subdivision. So I, I'm a licensed professional engineer, uh, I did land surveying and, and civil engineering design projects all throughout McComb Township in southeast Michigan for probably fifteen years. So I'm very experienced in this process and understand that rezonings happen. I understand now, I didn't understand why this was coming up, but I understand now that you're eliminating a zoning district, which makes sense to me, but I'm not sure that R1 really makes sense to me with what is existing on that side of this, on Fairchild in that area. Um, the majority of us that live there are on larger one acre or more sized parcels, mine's about six acres. Um, and I just don't see where R1 is really the right fit there. I, I see what you're doing on the north side of, of, uh, Hagan, moving it to R1E. I think that would be more appropriate if you're gonna rezone this section, uh, to anything. Um, I think R1E would be much more appropriate in this case, um, given what's out there right now and the, and the houses that are there. Uh, my neighbors across the street, I had planned to be here tonight, um, they have a very large, uh, horse barn on their property. And it, one of their concerns, talking with me initially, was what's gonna happen, are they gonna all sudden be in non-conformance? Um, I saw your slide a minute ago that said that that was not the case, but, um, my experience working with townships, when you have a parcel that's in non-conformance, it becomes a, a compliance issue for you. So, um, I dealt with a number of people and that's the type of a situation. So I don't know if there's anything that's gonna be provided to those homeowners in that regard, but, um, I'd love to hear your response to that and, uh, thoughts on that. But I, uh, and my wife, and I think several people that are here tonight, are, um, not in support of the rezoning at, at, at least on the section on the west side between Hagan and Twenty-Five Mile, um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Doug Petron, I live at two four eight one five Hagan Road, and I'm opposed to the rezoning of the, uh, property to the east of, uh, Omo, up to Twenty-Six Mile Road. Most of those parcels already have homes in them, there's no water and sewer, as he said. And the only one I could see benefiting from this development is the guy who currently owns that eleven acre piece there, 'cause he's a builder. Uh, he's already dumped a couple of hundred truckloads of dirt in what used to be standing water on his land, it pushed it over into mine, so, you know, I don't want any further detrimental effect into the area, 'cause it's, like he said, it's mostly rural. And I think the zoning should stay as is. I don't know if you care about wildlife at all, but the deer have a regular trek right through that place every day. They go down to get food and come back to, to sleep at night on my land, which is twenty acres directly to the east of it.
Sir, what was your ad-?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was your address again, please?
Two four eight one five Hagan Road. So I have the twenty acre piece directly abutting this. Oh, also, in the, uh, southeast corner, there's a high voltage power lines going right through it. So I don't know if, if they can even build that close to the power line, they'd have to be like three hundred feet.
Uh, Mr. Chair, yeah, thank you, sir. Um, you do understand that for your particular parcel, it's not recommended to be rezoned to R1, which is three units per an acre, but to the less density R1E, which will be the lowest density, um, classification, rezoning classification that we will have going forward in our master plan? That's two units per acre, it's not R1, but R1E on your particular parcel.
The one I own?
If you're at two four eight one five Hagan Road?
Yeah.
Yes, according to what the planning department.
Yeah, I'm not looking to build anything on my piece, so. I just don't wanna have a subdivision right directly up, abutting my woods with people running through the woods and getting hurt.
I understand.
There's no fence.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I saw you, I saw you move your leg, I thought maybe you were gonna come up, okay. Anyone else? Go ahead once. All right, then I need a motion to close the public portion, so I'll move. Motion by Mr. Shudo, seconded by Mr. Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Um, do we have any more comments from commissioners? Or Mr. Box?
Well, just to answer the question, so, uh, with regards to R1E, and I, I went back a few slides, so you can see. So I mentioned the reason these two are going to R1, they're not large enough to meet the zoning ordinance for R1E, similar to why we, we just removed a couple parcels from the Romeo Plank R2L piece. Uh, I think what they were getting at is this, this piece here, why, why could these not be R1E as opposed to R1? I think that's a fair point, a lot of these do meet the category of R1E, but there are also several smaller ones that are too small. They would also become non-conforming if they were R1E. So rather than have a mixing of R1E and R1, R1E, R1, uh, we felt it only appropriate to have them all R1. Uh, I understand the concern of, of development, there is no development at this time that's been brought to our attention. Uh, I think a lot of those are such odd-shaped parcels, it would be difficult to, to build any more than what's already on them anyways, uh, with the exception of the one that's on the corner, uh, I, you mentioned that the one with the horse, uh, farm, uh, I, I agree, that one could potentially be developed, it is a little bit larger, uh, but again, it's an active horse farm, as far as I'm aware. We have no developments right now, uh, I don't, I don't envision that farm going anywhere anytime. Uh, I've not been approached by any developers or anybody looking for property up in that area, there's no water and sewer up there. So I don't foresee any, any subdivisions being built up there, uh, in the next decade or beyond.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything else before we go for a move?
Just to Mr. Box, could, could you, to the public, go back through that the taxes aren't gonna change and?
Sure, yeah, he, he did point out, uh, that slide, um, so, yes, you, you'll, with these changes, uh, homeowners can continue living the way they're living, uh, they're not gonna be, uh, you know, their structures are not gonna be asked to be torn down if they're non-conforming, e- everything that they have now, they will continue to have, it will not affect their taxes. Um, you know, continue living the way you're living, it's just getting rid of R1S from, from the zoning ordinance. Uh, and, and we've notified already the building department and code enforcement of, of this, and these parcels will not, you know, you're not gonna get a, if you are in one that becomes R1, you're not gonna get a violation if you have chickens in your backyard because you already had chickens when, when the zoning changed, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could? Uh, Mr. Box, just to follow up on that, uh, two things, uh, the first one, I believe accessory buildings might have been mentioned, I'm not sure this is where the question was going, but accessory buildings are based on square footage of the lot, the size it's allowed, correct?
Correct, and that would apply to R1, R1E, R1.
So if it's R1S right now and they have, they are allowed a square footage of building because of their lot size, regardless of whether it changes to R1 or R1E, they would be allowed the same accessory building size.
Correct, it's the same chart, yep.
And then the second thing, uh, I think this speaks, uh, to, uh, uh, one of the residents' questions. This is not being brought up to develop these parcels, correct?
Correct.
You sort of made that point, but no one's looking to develop these, we're not looking to make them more developable. We're looking to make sure that our zoning codes all match up. So at the moment, we're not expecting things to be built here, as Mr. Box mentioned. The property doesn't even make sense in a lot of cases to be built on, but we're trying to make sure that our zoning code matches up with our master plans when I have legal issues.
Yep, and, and with regard to development, I mean, if you pay attention to the map of where developments are happening, it's, it's incremental, where water and sewer is getting dragged piece by piece, that they're a long way from this area. So, uh, a developer is not looking at this.
They're not interested in spending that, yes.
This is a long way from water and sewer right now.
All right, um, I did have one other question with regards to, uh, um, the parcels on Romeo Plank, uh, really briefly. Um, the parcels that we're leaving out, they're not able to be rezoned to R2L. I suppose that's correct for other parcels there, but we are expecting them to be combined and so it'll be. So do we have to, if, if we were to make a motion, uh, would we have to make a contingent on them being combined?
I guess I would defer to Mr. Alloy on that, but I don't think that's the case, I think we can, we can rezone them and, and yes, we're, for the time being, they would be non-conforming, but the, they will be combined when Walden Communities is developed into one parcel.
I don't know if, Mr. Alloy, if you wanna, if you don't wanna add on to that, it's fine, I just wanna make sure that if we're.
Can you clarify your question?
So there's multiple parcels along Romeo Plank, this, Mr. Box is saying we cannot rezone because they do not meet the requirements. However, there is other parcels there that also do not meet the requirements. However, we are anticipating that as part of the, uh, court sanctioned development, that those parcels will be combined in the future.
Sure.
So the question is, do we need to recommend rezoning contingent on the parcels being combined, or how's the best way to handle that?
Think you have to rezone based on the present condition, although there is a consent judgment, the consent judgment will govern the, the development. I, I spoke to Mr. Box earlier today and I said, is it necessary to rezone today? We're rezoning based on the fact that, again, we don't, we have, they're currently zoned with a designation that does not.
Does not exist.
Does not exist, right? So we're trying to match it up with what's there, but the, but the consent judgment will prevail in terms of the ultimate future of this, this development.
So would you recommend us making the rezoning contingent, or are we fine, or do you think we're, we're safe?
Think you have to rezone it based on the, the present condition, I don't think you make a contingent, no.
So would that mean we would be rezoning a non, rezoning it to a non-conforming lot?
So which lots are non-conforming, do we believe? Some of these more narrow lots, uh, would, would not meet the, the frontage or the acreage, uh, requirements for R2L.
Mm-hmm.
But they would be combined at the time Walden Communities moves forward, which.
Sure.
They have an approved site plan that I believe they're in for engineering right now, it's not far off. And, and I guess, uh, to what we talked about earlier, if not R2L, it still can't be R1S, it has to be something.
Right, it cannot be R1S, that's, that's understood.
Correct. But is there any zoning designation that, that we could assign to them that would make them non-conforming, is the question? Uh, that would make them conforming, not not. R1 would be the only one, and even then, some of the really narrow ones may not have seventy, I, I don't have the actual measurements in front of me, may not have seventy feet of frontage, I'm not sure.
Sure, there's also a length to width on a parcel too, isn't there, when rezoning it?
Yeah, well, a lot of those already.
Yeah.
Are already non-conforming because they're longer than three to one. So if they, the, the, the issue is, is that they're legal now, right? They would be non-conforming, it would be causing a non-conformity because it would not be in line with the, the zoning designation that we create. So the question is, is what is the end result, that's what I'm really thinking about, right? Does it create a problem for this parcel because it's temporarily non-conforming? Because we know that there's a consent judgment, we know that that's gonna be redeveloped, and in the end of the, end of the day, it doesn't really matter. So I think that's, I don't think you have to rezone it contingent upon it being developed as it is. I think you either rezone it as requested, or.
Or not.
Or not.
Right, okay.
I think that's really it.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Alloy, I think, Mr. Box. Yeah, I, I think it does, and I, I just wanna make sure we're, we're dotting our i's.
Good question.
Um, and then just to clarify, so with regards to density, R2L would maintain the density that's being proposed. Uh, or not that's being proposed, that is, that is sanctioned and has site plan approval with the existing development. Uh, and it probably is less intense based on, you know, other, other factors such as height and, and things of that nature.
Yeah, R2L allows six units per acre, uh, and I believe the, the Walden Communities is, is a little under that. I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I think they would, they would meet that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield, do we have a motion for this item? Anybody like to make the motion, I know it's a little confusing with everything that's going on here. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, the only reason I'm, I'm, I'm hesitating is I would prefer to see those R1. But if a motion needs to be made, I can make the motion, I don't think that it's going to be more intense, so I will make the motion. Uh, this will be with regards to, uh, item six C, the mass rezoning, uh, permanent parcels as noted in our packets, um, with the exception of zero eight two eight one zero one zero zero five, zero eight two eight one five one zero zero five, zero eight two eight one five one zero zero six. Uh, those three will be removed for a future, um, for future consideration. Um, and the recommendation to the Board of Trustees would be to approve the remaining parcels per the schedule given by Mr. Box to the Planning Commission pursuant to compatibility with the past and proposed future master plan. Uh, and also compatibility with other uses being planned on the sites, uh, and also that it would main, it would maintain in some cases, uh, current density or protect current density.
Okay, that was a mouthful. Um, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield, seconded by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Tuckfield, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Shudo. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Alright, last item, old business. Rezoning, mass rezoning residential one-family suburban R one S. To residential one-family urban R one. And I believe this is part of what Mr. Tuckfield asked for everybody to check in the Planning Department the last time we met. Is that correct, Mr. Box?
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt you briefly, we do have public comments or later, if you want to.
Nope, sir, we're all done.
We have.
It's a recommendation to the board.
Comments later, he was asking.
Oh, yeah, we do. We have, we have public comments at the end. Yes, sir. Yep, so if you wanna hang, that's great. Well, thank you. Okay, Mr. Box.
So going, stepping back to phase four, I was not here last time, I apologize. There were a few parcels that were pulled out of that rezoning process in section twenty-eight. I'm sure you all recall, so I, I think the, the question was with regards to a variance that had been approved on this property. So I did look back and see the variance process for the one parcel, parcel in particular. So this is parcel oh eight, two eight, one, two, six, zero, zero, five. Uh, they initially requested a variance to allow sixty-six foot parcels, as you see there. That variance was denied. Uh, they were attempting to fit two houses on the north side and two on the south side of Norway Pine Drive that they would extend. Uh, they did come back a little bit later in, in April of twenty nineteen and get an approval. Uh, that would allow one seventy-two foot, foot parcel on the north and the south side. Uh, as well as a landlocked sixty-foot parcel that would be the, the length of both of the other parcels, as well as the length. Uh, of the width of the roadway, uh, until such time that the, the developer or, or another developer essentially continues the road. And as you can see, they're kinda stubbed out on both sides. I think the intent of that developer is to ultimately connect them. You also see though on this map that the parcel that was granted the variance, which would be this parcel. So they were given a variance to have a seventy-two foot wide parcel here, seventy-two foot wide parcel here. And a narrower sixty-foot parcel here. It's not split yet because he hasn't built the roadway. The road has to come first, so those parcels that can be buildable will have road frontage. Uh, so even though that variance was approved at, at that time, it's, the parcel is still not split because the roadway has not yet been extended. That being said, I, I don't think that that variance would have anything to do with regards to the rezoning from R one S to R one. If anything, it supports it a little bit more because those lots that he's creating are more R one type lots.
Okay. Commissioners?
I got one question. On a variance, how long is it good for? Is there a time?
It runs with.
This runs with the property?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Box for looking into it. Um, I caught or saw that at the meeting, last meeting. I hadn't looked into it at all, and so I was a little concerned. I remember, I don't think you were here for either of those, but. They were quite contentious variance request meetings, and I knew there was a lot going on with them, so. I appreciate you guys looking into it. Thanks for humoring me on that, and I appreciate you looking into it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mr. Tuckfield, Mr. Box, how do we make the motion for this? Do we need to state all the, the prop, cause I, I don't see it on our agenda here.
Should be on the backside of your agenda. Uh, it lists the six parcels, so yes, you would need to, uh, name those six parcels.
Page two.
I think it would be appropriate.
Okay.
Appropriate to name those six parcels in a motion, however, this is a rezoning, so it, it does require a public hearing.
Okay. Is it up there? Did I miss it? Oh, I did miss it, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Spatafora. Alright, if there are no other questions, does anybody would like, would like to make a motion? Anyone?
I'd make a motion to open a public hearing if that's what you were looking for.
Thank you, that's, that was just what I was thinking, yes. Opening it to a public hearing at seven twenty-four. Mr. Tuckfield made the motion, supported by Mr. Oliver. Hi, guys. Do you have anything you'd like to comment on? Are you sure? Okay. Alright, so then we'll go ahead at seven twenty-five and make a motion to close the public hearing. And Mr. Oliver made the motion.
Support.
Mr. Tuckfield seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Now. A motion for this item, rezoning, mass rezoning residential one-family suburban. Anybody like to make that motion?
No further discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To re, mass rezoning from residential one-family suburban to residential one-family urban. Uh, permanent parcel number zero eight dash twenty-eight, one, twenty-six, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, two. Zero, zero, three, zero, zero, four, zero, zero, five, and zero, zero, nine in section twenty-eight.
Okay, motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Alright. Public comments on non-agenda items. And we don't have to make a motion for this one. Are you guys, are you coming up? Alright, now these are non-agenda items.
Non-agenda.
Okay, and if you just.
Richard Howell, nineteen, two fifty-eight, Lamplighter Trail.
Say, say your first name again, sir.
Richard.
Okay.
Richard Howell.
I, I, I think I was talking over you, so I apologize. Go ahead.
You're fine. My question is, is I know they put a new drainage system in the park, Waldenberg Park. Any idea what that was supposed to do? Because it still floods and it's still flooded as it is right now. Twice last month, it flooded, along with my backyard, which is section twenty-eight. And I was just curious if you knew what they spent on it, because it's not working, whatever they did. That's my first question. Second question was, with consent judgment that went through, I thought they rezoned it to CF. So if they rezoned it CF, why are we now rezoning it to R one S?
Alright.
Just doesn't make sense. If that's the case, we should be reimbursed the legal fees from when we went to court. In the township, if they're re-changing everything anyhow. Cause originally, it was all voted down. From the beginning.
Okay. Alright.
I'll sit down.
Are you done? Thank you. Um, this young lady that's sitting next to you, do you, would you have anything you'd like to comment on? What he said? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public portion at seven twenty-seven? Oh, wait a minute, I don't have to do that, do I? Never mind. Public portion is closed. Alright, Mr. Box.
Uh, I'll, I'll do my best to answer those questions. Um, the first one, uh, with regards to the drainage at, at Waldenberg Park. Uh, that would be a question that will, we can, I can talk with you after the meeting, but that's something the township engineer or the Water and Sewer Department could answer. I, I do not know what work was being done. I know there was some work being done, but I don't know what it was. So we can talk after and I can get your, your contact information and put you in touch with the right people. Uh, with regards to the consent judgment, uh, I believe what that stated was that they were allowed to use it as. The community facility zoning category, but it did not actually rezone the property itself.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners' comments, anyone?
I just have a couple.
Sure.
Thank God the roundabout's finally open. Traffic on twenty-four mile is back to normal. I drove through it today. Second, I'd like to thank our broadcast media department for putting the Halloween party on the McComb website. It looked like it was a hit. I saw a lot of pumpkins there, I don't know where they came from, but it looked great, and finally, uh. I'd like to thank everybody for everything that they've done. The board's doing a great job, the community's moving forward, and. I'm proud to be a McCombs Township resident, I'm sure we all are, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone else? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I just mentioned that, uh, one of our members isn't here tonight, isn't feeling too good, and I just wanna pass on a word of support to him. Hope feels better.
Okay, sounds good. And for, for me, I will not be here at the next meeting, just to make it known. I will be in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, at an Abraham Lincoln Forum. So I will be just absorbing as much as I can about the man, so. Okay.
I have a comment, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If, um, the township, uh, would consider undertaking. Uh, and maybe this is in conjunction with the new, um, grant writer position that the township has. To look at ways of, uh, uh, realizing or gaining additional revenue, particularly with roads. I mean, we have a lot of developments come in, uh, some developments, uh, you know, traffic impact studies are done. Others are not. Uh, we don't always consistently raise that, but, um, with, uh. You know, the situation we have in the township, the traffic patterns, the backups, north, south main roads, east, west, uh, main roads. Uh, if the township, uh, board, uh, and administration would perhaps look into. Um, ways of gaining revenue for that. I know a number of years ago, I believe it was, uh, the Public Interest Research Group in Michigan. The acronym is PURJAM. I wanna say it was around two thousand thirteen, they did a study as far as, um, perhaps traffic impact. Uh, fees, road impact fees, and, uh, only because, uh. You know, we wanna obviously remain competitive as a township and, uh, with, with developments that. You know, we approve and we consider with our neighboring townships, but. This is a road issue. I've mentioned it a few times in the past, in the short time that I've been on the Planning Commission, but it's, uh. Something that's not gonna go away in the near future, and as we approve more, particularly residential developments. Where there's just an increased density, um, I, I just hope that the developments there. Or at least the road infrastructure can keep pace with, uh, with the residential developments. That we're approving. So those are just some general comments that I have. If, uh, maybe a little bit of stirring the pot within administration or the board would just at least consider. Start looking at it with an eye toward the future, um, for our community. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anyone else? Okay, then let's move on to the McCombs Township Board of Trustees liaison update, Mr. Charles Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things, uh, the board has entered in with a, a new. Uh, company for IT service. Um, it's called, uh, IT Right. We entered into a three-year contract. Um, they do a lot of work with local government now, so we think it'll be a pretty good fit. That's one of the things. The other thing is, uh, we all remember Pitchford Park, the, the, the family donated. There was always a little bit of an issue with some of the back property, so we're going to try to sell off two acres of that. Cause we don't think we're gonna need it for the park, and so that was one of the things that the board decided to do. And then, uh, the other thing, we entered into a, continued with a contract with McCombs County Sheriff. Um, so we'll continue with them. They do a great job now, and.
Sure.
We will continue with them, and with, uh, in regards to the Halloween hoopla, it was pretty good. We had a good time. Yeah, I don't know if any board members come, but it was good. I, there was a few guys I kinda recognized there, but. They had costumes on, I don't know who they were, but, you know, a couple of them. Trying to get candy, so, but, in a pumpkin. Still don't know who they are, but, uh, it was good, so, and that's it.
You know, it's amazing, Charlie, how they say when the reach catalog comes out in August or something like that. That these people buy the tickets that fast for the Halloween and, and the Christmas party.
Sold out.
They're sold out before.
In, in almost like hours.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah.
How popular it's become.
Yep, yeah, yeah. And then they staggered it, so we didn't have a mass group that come through. They just steadily come through all night, so it was good. Kids had a great time, and I think parents had a great time too, so. Awesome, yeah, that's it.
Okay, ZBA, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have a meeting on Thursday. Uh, we have agenda items. Um, I believe we have a special meeting, uh, in November. Uh, and then I believe I heard that we have agenda items in December as well, although I might be not remembering that correctly. So we have a, a busy few meetings ahead of us. I'll be here on Thursday. Um, I mentioned this last meeting, but I'll just mention again that Supervisor is looking for candidates for the ZBA as an alternate. Um, I assume that he's still looking. I haven't heard that he's closed anything, so I'm, I'm just gonna throw it out there. If anybody's interested. Uh, please feel free to apply to the Supervisor's office. They have a form online, you can call in, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and beyond that, that things are moving along. Um, we didn't, I did wanna mention, and I don't wanna get into the, the cases. Cause they're still upcoming, but we've continually noticed and we saw more this time with, um. Uh, improvements relative to side property lines, improvements, you know, the distance they can be from them, improvements relative to a house. You know, similar to where we see pools have to be ten feet away from the house. We, we have a request, I believe, this, uh, this agenda. With regards to a detached, like a, a sun porch or, or covered area relative to the house. Um, I think it's probably low down on the priority list, uh, as far as ordinance improvements. Um, but it maintains a, a, a trend of, um, how people are trying to improve their rear yards. And having difficulty fitting it in with the size of a rear yard, particularly with our ordinances, so. I'm not sure what the solution is. There might not be a good solution, but it's certainly something I think we should keep in mind. And something that we see regularly at the ZBA as people are trying to improve their properties and run into, uh, restrictions. Because of how much buildable area is left on the lot, so. So ahead, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Got you. Planning Department?
I guess I'll, I'll touch on what some of you have mentioned. Uh, yes, the Supervisor is still accepting applications. I think there's a couple in, but still accepting.
Good.
Uh, for alternate, alternate members for the ZBA. Uh, and yes, we do have a meeting on Thursday, as well as a special meeting. Uh, I believe it's November seventeenth. Uh, as far as a December meeting, as of now, I don't believe we have an agenda item, but somebody did reach out today and they have till the end of this week to submit. So we may have one, uh, in December.
Busy November, December.
Yes, so, um, I think that's about everything.
Okay, then motion to adjourn. At seven thirty-seven.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, passes unanimously.